All right. Good evening, everybody. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order at 5:05. Roll call, please. Here. She, she's on the... Can you hear us, Council Breyer?
I can hear you. I didn't hear a roll call. I didn't hear Hector if he was...
We know. Yeah, he's on.
I do hear him now, yes.
Board member Breyer is here.
Here.
Board member Penamara?
Here.
Is here, and Board Member, position six is vacant. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Hector.
Pardon me, Board Member Aresle.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Hector. So usually Prestizo comes in a little bit late. Six o'clock is hard for him to make after his work, so we haven't heard that he's not coming. So, and then Perry Miller is out ill tonight. All right, so the first item on the agenda is speakers heard on non-agenda item. Are there any speaker request forms?
Request forms from earlier today.
Okay, and with that, I'll give the audience an opportunity to raise their hand now. This will be the last opportunity to submit a speaker request form if you're virtual. All right, seeing none. Going once, going twice. Let's go ahead and move to the next item, which is the consent calendar. Any... There's no consent calendar, no minutes?
I believe we have no, no minutes.
Okay, very good, thank you. So, the next item then is items from the Executive Director. Item 4.1, an update on peer funding.
Thank you. As you know, the city applied for $4.2 million in funding from peer to fund certain improvements and transition at the Gateway Project site. The project would have been included preparing the site for new development. It also included, includes some work on adjoining streets, taking out existing temporary infrastructure, putting in new infrastructure where needed, and getting ready to market that site for, in accordance with the plan that was developed several years ago. The our request was reviewed by the Jackson County Peer Review Committee, and they voted on, a vote of four to zero to and one abstaining to fund the project at $2,337,000. What's, and Counselor Ponamara, Ponamara was at the meeting as well, as was the mayor. It's my understanding that what had occurred previously is that the committee had taken the amount of funding allocated to Jackson County and broken it into two funds, if you will. One for infrastructure and one for economic revitalization. And they considered applications in both categories. They had previously voted to approve an application from the City of Phoenix, where I think it was about three and a half million, if I'm wrong, which left in that sub-fund, if you will, $2,337, which is the amount that they approved for talent. That falls well short of the amount of the funding needed to undertake the project. There was no discussion at the committee meeting about what that reduction in funding, how that would affect the project, what elements of the project would need to be eliminated or modified in order to meet that budget. It was also noted at the meeting that in the economic revitalization sub-fund, if I'm not sure of the correct term, there was, they approved several projects utilizing that funding, but were not infrastructure projects. Oh, and I think they have a balance in that sub-fund of about $2 million, about right now. So they're going to meet again, I think, next month, to talk about what to do about perhaps opening another round of applications, or perhaps reclassifying some of the economic revitalization funding to infrastructure funding. We've had some conversations with the OHCS staff expressing some concerns that the, there was no opportunity to inter, interact with the committee about how the fund reduction, the allocation reduction would affect the city's project. And I know the issue of equity had also come up from council, from your representative on the on the peer committee. So we are having continuing discussions with with OHCS staff on how to approach this, whether we go back to the Advisory Committee with a further request or a request to have some further interaction with them about how this affects our project, whether we perhaps wait until there's a further allocation of funding to Jackson County to re-approach that. But in any event, OCHS staff has asked us to respond to this reduction in funding by providing a new budget that would meet the lower funding amount and identify what elements of the project would need to be eliminated, which I think would be instructive if we went back to the committee to share that with them and had an opportunity to re-approach them on, on the project. So we were looking at various strategies here to continue to pursue full funding for the project, or, or at least a significantly larger allocation. In terms of the existing gateway site, we have had, had correspondence with OCHS about the current residents there. They have indicated that they were going to come up with a strategy for transitioning that site. You know, we have learned that only seven of the families living there were residents of talent before the fire. That 78% of the people residing there were previously residents of Medford. You know, I've addressed the the department about the responsibility of the City of Talent for relocating residents who are largely not our residents. I know that there was a discussion previously about prioritizing residents there to make sure that they were if they had children in school, that they would have a priority for being hosted there and then talent residents as well. So we're continuing to interact with the Department of Housing and Community Services. They are, they've provided a commitment to working with us to come up with a relocation plan. I really think it is their responsibility to do that. And it is not, I don't believe that it should fall on the shoulders of the little city of talent to carry that whole load and go back to the state or to the peer committee to request funding to us or include that responsibility in our peer allocation to, to undertake that work on our own. So there are a number of partners, I think, that we need to engage and we're waiting for further direction from the department as to when they'll be presenting us with a relocation plan discussion document.
And that's OHCS, correct?
OHCS.
Yeah.
Sorry, I transpose those letters.
Oh, that's okay. I just want to make sure that it's OHCS that's coming up with that plan and not Act, it's, it's OHCS.
OHCS that made a commitment to take some lead here and come to us with some strategies on how they would see that working and that they would, they would take a, a leading role in that.
And just because I think there's kind of a disconnect about our priorities on that property and what is there, what there is there right now compared to what our pri, priorities have been all along, which is first, families with students, prioritizing families with students because our partner was, our partner is the Phoenix Tenon School District. And then second, prioritizing talent families with students in the school and then, and then, and then filling the rest with...
And we're requesting more demographics and access with respect to the student population.
Good.
Family, that, that was not included in the material that we received from the administration.
My understanding too is that there was some, there was some lost language in the, in the agreements between, so the agreements that we had with Rogue Retreat were, were more specified than they were with access. And that some of the priority language is in that previous contract. So if Access hasn't reviewed that, that might, that might impact that. But my understanding though is I think from the last report that you gave that every, that, that there are five vacant units now and that every other unit is with fire impacted survivors, is that correct?
Well, there, as of the last report I received from Access, which is about two weeks old now.
Was about what?
It's about two weeks old now. There were five empty units. I, they told me that they would start the process of attrition, if that was the city's desire to leave the units vacant as they become vacant rather than repopulating them. And I told them that they should go ahead and, and do that so that we're not having more people move in and reduce the number of folks that we ultimately need to relocate. I'm also advised that there are a number of the units that are having structural and mechanical failures. So it's, I think it's important to move along to come up with a plan to deal with. One of the units was taken out of service because of the structural and mechanical failures.
Member Byers?
For, for this update, I I know it's not a huge amount of information right now for those sort of living there, but I do think it would be valuable if we put together a short press release, making sure that is also friendly and share it on our website and stuff, and absolutely accessible. Just really, amongst people who live there, I think, they may not choose that, which would be a good thing. Even just the, this is what I think right now. This is definitely big value. And we, that, of course, for me, it's about me, you know, personally.
Thanks. I can hear you fine now. There must be others that are making... Yeah, I think that's a really good idea. I, I'd like to partner with Access and perhaps, perhaps the school to, to put something out and even arrange for some form of a meeting with the folks who are residing here.
To, to, I think it's really valuable to do that. It's so easy for this information to spread. And I, I would really hope that what, in fact, it's really, 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 like, at the most, I think.
And I really want to take, since we're on the air, this opportunity to dispel one rumor. That is that we're not evicting people from that site. There's no intention on the part of the city to evict people from that site. We've had some discussions internally about relocating some of the trailers that are no longer occupiable from the site. There have been some concerns about leaving them there vacant. But we don't want to send the wrong message by taking them off the property. So I think that would be a part of the message to be delivered as well.
Absolutely.
Because some of the trailers are disappearing, doesn't mean, doesn't mean we're moving people out of the site, off the site.
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing that part up too. At one point in time, you were talking, member Penamara? I was just going to say, at one point in time, you were talking about convening a meeting with all of the, the partners, OHCS, Access.
Yeah.
School District.
I'm waiting for OHCS to come up with a plan collaboratively with them so that they can be the lead partner in convening that kind of a discussion. So we can come up with a with a relocation plan that all of the parties have have participated in. OHCS has money other than pyramid that can be utilized to assist in the relocation. I was, I was advised by their leadership that they had, quote, many levers, unquote, with access to funding depending upon the particular needs of the individuals to assist with relocation.
And that's...
I, I, I just don't know what those are. And, but, so I think we need more information about what some of the options are and how folks might qualify for those.
And I recall that count, I, I just want to say this for the record. I want to put it on the record. I, I recall that, that information coming in a letter from the leadership that we were copied on where I think they said, this was prior to, this was right before Access sent in the letter to the peer funding about, about slow, slowing down the peer funding because of the concerns and, and in exact same time, OHCS is saying making a plan at this time would be premature. So when we talk about them, waiting for them to make a plan in the wake of them sending us all a letter saying, making a plan prior to the peer funding process would be premature. What does, does that, do we have any indication from that point to this about what their timing does look like for the, for them to create a plan?
No, I, we don't. It's, it's been a couple of weeks. Yeah, you're correct. OHCS did communicate what, with us and told us that coming up with a relocation plan now was premature. And that correspondence came in prior to the Advisory Committee meeting.
Did Access ever get a copy of that letter? Because I, you know, I felt like what was happening, there was their cross-communication where Access didn't understand that we were in discussions with OHCS and there was two conflicting messages from these agencies, one saying, planning now doesn't make any sense. The other one saying, slow your roll, peer, they don't have a plan. I mean, was there ever a connection between those two agencies?
I, I have not facilitated that at this point.
Okay, all right. I hope that, that, that sounds like an opportunity with that housing, convening that housing meeting to get Access caught up with where we're at with OHCS. Because that, that was damaging and unnecessary. Counselor Penamara?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify, get clarification on Access's role in all of this. My understanding that Rogue Retreat before and now Access, they're essentially the navigation specialists, and their job is to make sure that these folks transition from transitional housing into permanent housing. As we talk about a relocation plan, it almost sounds like we're talking about putting folks in some other transitional housing rather than a pathway to permanent housing. So, you know, we're seeing things go awry, you know, like I mentioned Royal Oaks, other things. It's, you know, my hope is that these folks transition you know, my hope is that these folks transition into permanent housing. And at one time, early on, we were saying that it might even be possible to transition folks to the gateway in a way that part of the site would be used to build, you know, some sort of vertical housing. And whereas the other part of the site could continue to be used, you know, with some sort of barrier or something, continue to be used for folks in the trailers. So in a way, we were essentially providing that pathway out of the gateway on the gateway, which is fun to think about, but I don't know from, you know, a development point of view, if that's, if that's realistic or desirable. I've certainly had construction next to, next to me in my life and it's, it's doable. It's not necessarily fun, but it's, it's doable. So anyway, I was just wondering those two questions. Access's role as far as navigating folks into permanent housing. Is there some way we can find out how that's going? And secondly, some sort of transition to permanent housing on the gateway side itself.
Yeah, when I met with Access Management, they advised me that that is not their role. That there, that there's nothing in the agreement that, where the city contracted with them to facilitate relocating people into the permanent housing.
It was never on intention to do that. It was not our intention to contract with Access to have them relocate people, but it was, it is part of their function as from Access has been all along to find housing for the folks that are in the motel rooms, the, you know, the gateway project. So we didn't, yeah, we didn't contract with Rogue Retreat for that either. It's just that part of their function at Access, as I understand it.
It's their Center for Community Resilience Program.
Yeah, is, is, is to continue to work with those caseworkers and resettling folks from all of the transitional housing, not just specific to, specific to the gateway. And they've done that. I mean, we've, that, so this, this group that is at, I mean, I think it's important to acknowledge that this group that's at the gateway, it's not even the original group that was there. The population has changed over the period of time that, that we've, that's been an active mission out there. So they have found a lot of, they have resettled a lot of people in that. So I mean, even getting demographics at this point in time is a little bit moot because that demographic has changed the entire time with the focus of placing fire survivors there.
But so, so just so I understand, it's, it's their role to do that work, but we didn't contract with them to do that work.
Right, because that's not our role. Yeah, I mean, weren't, you know, there's no, there's, from the beginning with our partnership with OHCS and OHCS is really who has been funding access to some degree on some of this. So our partnership with, with OHCS, our partnership is with OHCS. We have a contract with Access to manage the project. But the, their OHCS is, is the holder of the transitional housing mission. We're just a part of that.
Okay, that makes sense. And any thoughts about, you know, simultaneously actually building on part of the site even while there are some folks still housed?
I, I haven't spoken with any developers about it, but based upon my experience with development, I think they would find it difficult to work around.
Yeah.
And a less attractive project to propose on.
Plus, there's two, I mean, John addressed this early in the project. John Magar said, there's two layers of infrastructure on that property. There's the infrastructure that we laid in for the permanent project, and then there is temporary infrastructure on top of that. That serves the, the trailers. And so, yeah, having to remove all of, remove all of that. It was, was one of the main complications of doing it in piecemeal. Anyway, I'm, I'm really relieved to hear that OHCS is, is actually going to develop a specific plan. Because with plans come funding, so that's, that's a good thing. Are there any other comments or questions on this topic?
Oh, one other thing, if we're asking for demographics and numbers, I'm curious how many, how many folks have cycled through the gateway over the years?
Can you say that again?
Sure. How many people have cycled through the gateway over the years?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item on the agenda is items from chair or board members. Are there any items from the board or the chair? None for me. No? Okay. No, any written communications? All right, so this meeting is adjourned. And we'll see you at the council meeting in 15 minutes.